All right, go ahead.
There you go. Okay. This is the call, the April 20th, 2021 Wilmette Board of Trustees meeting to order. All the proper notices have been given and trustee and director Austin is meeting from the library and the rest of us are on Zoom. So trustee Barshis.
Oh, give me one, give me one second.
How are you, Dan?
I'm good. I'm doing double duty. The House of Reps is going real late, so I'm double zooming. I may need to jump to go testify, but how are you doing?
Okay. We have doing Zooms here tonight. Okay, trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Riddle?
Here.
Trustee Rogers?
Yeah.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Trustee McDonald? Here, thank you. Okay. At this time, it's a time that we allow the public to do public comments. Anybody who wishes to address the Board of Trustees can do so at this time. Is there anyone that like to address us? One, once, twice? Nobody? So, okay. Moving on, there is no one that will be doing, addressing us today. So right behind the agenda, you've got the minutes from the March 16th, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion? Can we have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, trustee Wolf has motioned to approve the minutes and trustee Fishman has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have the roll call to approve the minutes? Just the Barshis? Trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Riddle, sorry. It's out of order. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Riddle?
Oh, I said I.
Okay. Trustee Rogers? And Wolf?
Yes.
And trustee McDonald? Yes. At this time, there are no presentations, so we will move to the treasures report. Trustee Rogers?
Okay, a couple of things. One is, we received 1.6 million in property taxes for 1,573 from the panel worth of library contract and $5,300 in general fund interest. There is an anomaly in this month's report. The reason that the general fund expenditures have shown as 65% is because the March payroll actually landed into the account on April 1st instead of on March 31st. Had it been included, we would be at 69% instead of 65%. In addition to that, the fourth quarter typically is when purchases of computers and furnishings that are in the budget typically occur. And so we do anticipate that the end of year balance will be very close to what we forecast in the budget. There is no anticipated large surplus. It is strictly an anomaly based on the fact that payroll did not get recorded at the end of March as it usually would be. It was reported on April 1st. The April 1 figures, when we look at the next financial report, will show an additional charge, additional charges for payroll. There's nothing else extraordinary in the report. Are there any questions?
Just briefly, do we anticipate ending up around 95, 92, 98? Is it too early to tell?
That's too fine a line to cut this far in advance. It depends on when, what bits come in at for the remaining purchases of things like computers and furnishings. We really don't know that, at that level of detail, three quarters of the way through the year.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no questions about the financial report, the next item then would be payment of bills and salaries. You have that as an attachment in the materials. I move approval of the bills and salaries for March.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Rogers to approve the bills and salaries. It's been seconded by trustee Wolf. Is there any discussion? Barring no discussion, can we have the roll call to approve the March 31st bills and salaries? Yes, trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
It looks like Jan is froze.
I think she froze. I think Jan froze. You want me to finish calling it?
I can step in and call.
Okay, do that. Yeah, thanks.
All right, so I did hear that trustee Barshis said yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Riddle?
I.
Trustee Rogers?
Yeah.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
And trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay. In terms of action items, we're moving on to action items. And the next order of business is to schedule a finance committee meeting to begin the budget. Do you want to talk a little bit about that? Ron, trustee Rogers?
Well, the next, the next action or activity of the financial meeting to, the preliminary meeting to evaluate or consider the budget for the coming fiscal year. This is about the time when we normally would do that. And this is in the agenda in order for us to schedule a meeting of the financial prior to the May meeting.
All right, interrupt. Jan, you're back on, so it's working for you. I think we hear you. Sorry to interrupt, Ron.
Anthony, did you want to add anything further to scheduling?
We just have a couple committee meetings that are going to be coming up, obviously. So the finance committee meeting is one of our priorities. And we'd like to hold this meeting in advance of our May 18 regular meeting, which is going to be a transitional meeting for us. That is the date at which we're going to be swearing in our new trustees. So it would be, I think, prudent for us to begin this conversation about the budget here in advance of that, so that there's some grounding for our incoming board, so that they have an opportunity to sit in on the committee meeting with the current board, see the budget process in progress and be able to take up that mantle after they've been sworn in for a subsequent committee meeting. So that's one of our milestones. I will send out a doodle poll to you all following our meeting tonight and we'll set a date for early May for that meeting. There's also another committee meeting that we'll need to do here in the near term as well, and that relates to our policy committee. Staff has received more policy information from our attorneys, and we have a new draft policy as well that we've prepared for you regarding our library cards and accounts. That's the next chapter that's up for review. So that's another meeting I'd like to hold here soon. But obviously, our first priority and what's on the agenda and what we're talking about right now is setting a date for our finance committee meeting. So I will send out a doodle poll. If there's any dates that are out, that you know for certain right now, that'd be good for us so that we don't waste our time trying to schedule something around those dates. Otherwise, we'll just target sometime during the workday on Monday through Friday in early May.
Okay. You want to, is it okay to move for discussion item? Are there any questions in terms of the budgeting process?
I guess just procedurally or process, should we, did you want to like include the non-board members that might want to participate in the doodle poll too? Sort of a courtesy?
Definitely. I can certainly do that. Thank you, Dan. That's a great suggestion. All three of our incoming trustees are on the call with us this evening. So I will be reaching out to all of you. We have been corresponding via email for the last couple weeks and gathering up some orientation materials. So I will certainly invite you all to attend this meeting as a matter of course as well.
Okay. We had a policy committee, I'm moving to discussion item? Any other, any other things before we move on regarding the budgeting process? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. The discussion items, we had a policy committee, and I think director Austin has already told you that it's gone back to the staff. Originally, we had a
Glass of water.
Jan, can we mute you? Okay. Originally, it had gone, it had been approved, but with pending a review by the attorney. And so the attorney came back with lots of more comments. So right now, it's being reviewed by the staff and then it will be reviewed by the committee. So that's the status of the policy. And that was basically the operations policy, which went from two pages to about 16 or 17 pages. Okay, and pandemic response plan update, director Austin?
Yeah. Nothing really to report in terms of the pandemic response per se. At this point, all staff have had the opportunity to opt into receiving a vaccination. We're not collecting the data on this. It's not a condition of employment, but every staff member has been offered the opportunity to do so. And many have received their, even up through their second dose. I received my second dose on Friday. So a number of us have gone through this process. So the staff is generally taken care of as far as that's concerned. A number of folks have taken part in the community clinic that was set forth by the village in a partnership with our community out at Nutria West. So in terms of, you know, operations and our response plan here locally, some of this relates to the RFID project, so I can get into that detail here in a moment. I will say that there was one bit of news that took place at the system level related to the pandemic response plan. And that was a decision from Rails regarding information regarding the quarantine of materials. Rails elected based upon data that was shared through the CDC and a number of other studies, as we've been following the Realm study, that cites that the transmission of the virus is primarily done through droplets in the air as it is a respiratory disease, and that the transmission of the virus does not seem to be indicative on physical objects themselves, which relates to the circulation of our collections. So based upon that data, Rails gave the guidance to all of its members to suspend their activity of quarantining the delivery materials. As a matter of course, we've been quarantining all of our materials for a matter of days since the pandemic began. It began with kind of a full-scale quarantine where we weren't accepting any returns whatsoever during that period in April and then into May when we started accepting returns again. Gradually moved into a phase of about three days. And in more recent times, we've been quarantining for 48 hours. Delivery materials had their own set of requirements that were set up by Rails and CCS. And that is what we're talking about here. So the requirement was materials needed to be quarantined before they were sent off in Rails because individual libraries had their own response strategies. And the only way that the receiving library could be reasonably assured that the drivers and any space in between the libraries had quarantined for a reasonable amount of time was to establish some boundaries and establish a set of days for that. So when Rails relaxed that, that put the onus back on individual organizations to determine what their response plan is. CCS last week at our governing board meeting affirmed what Rails, what Rails' vote was. We had originally agreed to do that as part of our agreement with CCS. So now it's back to individual libraries and our own quarantine procedures. At this time, Wilmette Library is continuing to quarantine our materials for 48 hours. And we will continue to evaluate the data to determine if this is the appropriate response time for us. But the turnaround time for our holds material and so on has been reasonable. And as there, as there are no penalties right now for late fees, there, it's, the impact on our service is relatively nominal. So it's, it's just, this is some information that was being shared through Rails and CCS, and I think it was pertinent for me to share that information with you here. The other detail I wanted to share with you is that we are making some preparation. Go ahead, Lisa. You're muted.
Given that most of the staff will have shots, what will change in terms of the operation and how you're utilizing personnel in the library?
Well, I think the short answer to that is not much will change. We do foresee that masking and social distancing is going to continue as is. We do have our partitions in place. Those will remain. There are some staff that are spread throughout the building in various offices in an effort to try to abide by our social distancing guidelines. And in a number of those cases, that strategy will need to continue for the foreseeable future. I do see that relaxing a little bit as we move forward, but I don't have any immediate plans to make those changes in terms of opening up the study rooms or even the auditorium. There, there are some other contingencies that are non-pandemic related but relate to our capital repair project this summer that will also be impactful on some of our spaces in the building too. But in terms of actual staffing levels and so on, what I have directed the leadership team to do at this time is to go back and evaluate our remote work policies and agreements with individual staff members. And our goal is to try to bring as many of the staff back into the building as is reasonable and as is possible. A number of our staff are able to work remotely, and some of them will need to continue to do so for individual arrangement purposes. But for the most part, we're going to, we're going to start seeing a general return back to the building so that we can begin preparing for what looks like a return to some degree of normalcy beginning after Labor Day. And Labor Day is kind of the date that I'm citing for a number of things because that also falls right after our capital repair project on the interior of the building with the replacement of the electrical panel that's going to require a bit of closure during the month of August. So what that means come, come that time, we'll be able to reopen some spaces. I imagine by then, we'll have a few more months behind us. We'll have a clearer picture. I hope we'll have a clearer picture of what the pandemic looks like in terms of our local operations. And we'll be able to start introducing, reintroducing some of the services that have been abbreviated during this time. So that would probably be around the time when we would see additional seating restored, study rooms perhaps being offered again. We may even see a gradual return to some in-person programming at that time. It's too soon to speculate about those details. We do anticipate some in-person programming on the outside this summer as part of our summer reading clubs. But inside the building, our spaces are still largely occupied, and I don't foresee us taking those steps until much later. So it's too soon for me to comment on that. But I think, does that answer kind of obliquely the question that you had, Lisa?
People are curious as to, you know, when you start getting everybody in terms of, i.e. herd immunity or whatever they want to call it, will there be, when will the program start returning? So I think that's on a lot of people's minds and, you know, being able to come a little bit and sit down in the library.
Of course. Obviously, our goal is going to remain the safety of our community and the safety of our staff. We know that we can do so within the structures that we've got currently. I think our door counts have been, have been reasonable. We have not had to have anyone wait to come in the building. And most everyone does abide by the basic guidelines of come in, do your business, and move along. Circulation's remaining steady. Our service model appears to be working. We do know that we're coming into finals period here in May. And I think maybe to coincide with that, we will see the return of some additional study options. We did remove some of the seating, or rather, we removed some of the shelving that was on the mezzanine level. And that's opened up some space that I believe is going to be an opportunity for us to reintroduce some degree of tables and seating at a reasonable distance away from a lot of the other activity in the library. So we're looking for some strategies that we can incrementally start moving back into some of the experiences that patrons are hoping to find when they come in the library. But, but so far, this model appears to continue to work for us. Folks are not having to wait for services. The computer room usage seems to turn over as, as quickly as it can. We're not seeing a lot of waiting. We're not seeing any waiting, really frankly. So I'll take any questions that you may have, but I think that's kind of where we're at right now with our response plan.
Just briefly, if I may, I encourage you to encourage your staff to think about any outdoor activities, especially on the youth side. If the weather warms up and you got a gorgeous lawn, you know, maybe we could think about maxing out some, you know, story time and do a lot more outdoors, especially if the staff's now fully vaccinated. So appreciate the opportunity to plant that seed.
Thank you, Dan. Yes, definitely. Those are, those are in the plans and works for the summer.
And you did a good job with doing Poetry Month in terms of how you've spaced the signs and the little tree. Poets, the poems on the tree. Will you ever take any of them down and perhaps publish some of them? As to what the kids submitted on the page?
I don't know what the plans are for the, the actual poems that are posted on the tree, but I like that idea. I think that's something that we could certainly do to try to share more of that information. But it's true, Lisa's referring to, it is Poetry Month here in April, and the library does have an installation on our lawn, kind of like a, kind of like our story walk and kind of like the Burma Shave signs, I guess, where the concept is to go around and, and follow the progress of this poem that celebrates poetry. We've also got a number of poems that have been posted in the windows around the library, making it a bit of a destination and encouraging people to engage in the love of reading and poetry. And our patrons are encouraged to contribute their own and to write poetry to add to our poet trees on the lawn. So not all of our trees are immediately accessible due to the construction fencing, which is the next item on my list here to discuss with you. But we do have a couple trees that have been targeted to receive these poems, and there's actually quite a few on there already right now. So, and that just started here in the last week. So I encourage you to check that out. Anything else about our pandemic response plan before I move on to the project updates? Okay, so projects. I will start with the construction project. So the capital repair project is well underway. The only trade that's currently working right now is our tuck pointing crew. Burgland has been an outstanding hire. I'm really thrilled that they were our low bidder on this project. Their quality and attention to detail is right on page with the expectations that our Wilmette community would have. I'm really impressed by our foreman and his daily communications with myself and our facilities manager, Marcos Levy. Each day, we're aware of where they're working. And if you've been around the building and you've had an opportunity to see the site, I'm sure you can tell a difference in the condition of the brick, just, just from the cleaning alone. The power washing is really, it's very impactful. You can see just how, how clean the brick is, or rather, how dirty it was. That team is also simultaneously going around and incrementally removing a lot of the caulk sealant that surround all of the, the, there's a number of junction joints in the brick that's, there are vertical joints on the building as well as all of the, the points where the flashing meets with the windows and the doors around the building. They're removing all of that caulking. A lot of that is cracked, having not been repaired or replaced in a number of years. And that's all getting resealed again, so that will help with our water infiltration. They're also simultaneously going through and grinding out a lot of the mortar joints in the bricks. That's the tuck pointing part of the project. And they've, they've been able to match the grout really well. It looks really great. It is a little bit noisy at times between, you know, the early morning hours and about 2:00 PM each day. So sometimes our chairs are rattling as they're going through grinding out the grout around us. But the results are really quite impressive. Having walked the roof with the team recently, the coping stones, those are the, the keystones at the top of each wall have all been deep cleaned. They were, they were practically black with mildew, and they are now shining a concrete gray. And all the mortar joints there have been replaced. We do know that that was one of the sites that was indicated as a point of water infiltration and that that water was running down through the building. So we know that this is the first phase of treatment for those leaks that we've experienced on the lower level, particularly on the south side of the building. I will let you know that we will have more information here soon about when that crew is going to begin inside work on the installation of that drain on the lower level. But at this point, that crew has not been mobilized yet, and they're not yet, not yet part of our construction crew. Once the, the tuck pointing crew is able to demobilize, I guess, and start breaking down their equipment, that's when the roofing crew will start to ramp up their work. But we still have probably about 10 weeks left of the tuck pointing work before we're going to see the roof crews onsite. So I'll keep you updated there. There is a website that we've dedicated to the project that is up, is, and is online. There's a picture up there right now. It was also in my report that's, that's showing that that tuck pointing crew in progress. We are taking progress photos, as is the crew. And we will update that page with more information as soon as I've got more details to share with you. That construction fencing that is along the south side of the building will remain there for the duration, I think, of at least probably through June until the roof portion of the project is completed. There's going to be a lot of equipment that's going to be, need to be loaded onto the roof and so on. So in addition to this, this lift that's out there right now, there will be other equipment that will be coming up there in the coming weeks. So that fencing is going to remain there. The fencing has kind of delayed some of our regular spring grounds maintenance. However, we do have a new grounds maintenance crew that's going to be coming in. I have detail about that in my report, and I can get, well, I can just cover that now, I guess, since we're on the subject. Our facilities manager, Marcos, did do a, a request for proposals for, for that information. And you can find actually the results of our study on page 15 of my report. Really impressed with the results of that study and that request for proposals. The company that we selected has come onsite and has already done an assessment. They're going to do a spring cleanup for us here very shortly after the tuck pointing crew is able to move out of like the garden area. And they've identified a number of projects that they're going to get underway for us, including removing a lot of the weeds that have accumulated here since the spring has popped up. So like I said, we'll, we'll start to see a little bit more activity around the grounds and the beautification of our space will start to be restored again here very soon. Any questions about the capital project or about the grounds? Okay, I can give you a brief up, oh yeah, go ahead, Lisa. And you're muted.
Is there a link on the front page? Because I went looking as to the updates for the construction?
It's under About. It's, it's part of the projects page that's listed under About. There's only four content blocks on the front page, and those are used for the highest impact programs and the immediate services. But the construction project is listed under About with projects.
Anyone, I mean, but how often do they, I'm just wondering, could there be just a little flag to see what's going on at the, with a link to that? Because I don't think, I wouldn't intuitively know to go look for About because I went scrolling, trying to figure it out. And I'm just wondering if there's some way that can be highlighted.
Thank you. I appreciate that. As you know, that this is one of the challenges of our website. It has pretty locked-in content blocks that make communication about details like this a little bit more challenging to post up. It could be clustered in with the service update banner that drops down when you first load the page that, that has the link to our current service model. That would be a point that we could link from. But the four content blocks on the front page are really, are really their high real estate, you know, they're used for our highest impact services. And dedicating a page or one of those content blocks directly for this purpose, I think would not be the best communication resource. But I'll certainly take whatever, whatever guidance you want to provide on that.
I think it needs to be more visible because I think people are wondering what's going on at the library when they pass. And that's the only reason I'm, you know, if they go there, even though most of the time I'm on my app or, you know, either the app for that. I'm just wondering if they're either the app for that, I'm just wondering if there can be just one sentence with a link. You know, what's going on, just highlighting in a different color so they can just link to it and go to the About page without having to search in the interim, because it'll be going on before that website's finished.
I was just going to make a comment. Today, someone at the vaccine at Natura West, I was talking with her and said I was a library trustee volunteering. And she said her comment was, what are they doing at the library again? And I offended, I felt like I fended off, you know, explained, but I to Lisa's point, I think a little bit of information, if it's possible, would be useful because it would have been nice to know I could send this patron to get more information. I did my best, but for what it's worth, it just came up today. They're working on the building again, was her comment.
Okay, well, and as you know, working on the building is is a full time project at a at a public facility. So we are, we are making that investment in the facility. We can, we can reevaluate the way that we do the communication about this. Please do inform your constituents that we have a website dedicated specifically to the project. And I will work with Stephen to see if there's a way that we can allocate more real estate on the front page of the website directing people to that page.
I would note that you do home remodeling and repair projects on an ongoing basis as they're needed. And that's really no different than what's going on at the library.
I understand that, but the taxpayers are paying for it. And I think because the sidewalk is blocked off, it's they're curious about it. That's all in terms of just informing them. But I know we but then you put the big license thing or whatever, the permit from the city. But I understand that, but I think it's sort of different.
Improving the communication is worthwhile. The projects themselves are not that extraordinary.
No, I know. They're just routine maintenance, but I think that needs to be explained.
Well, some of them are not so routine, like when we have to close the building for the electrical work. And when the parking lot is being reconditioned, shall we say. But, you know, I'm every few years I have to do that with the brick in my own driveway. So, you know, those are things that you just have to keep up with in order to prevent deterioration of what you've invested, have a a comfortable and usable facility.
I don't think people are questioning the expense. I think what they need to know is that it is routine and just to reinforce exactly how extensive it's going to be and the impact. That's all.
Well, and the communication on it can be improved. There's no question about that.
Okay, thank you for your feedback on that. Anything else about the Capitol project or the grounds?
Can I, am I on now?
Yes, you are, Jan.
Okay. I just have a question in relation to what this woman said. What would you say was the last time that repairs like that occurred at the library in such a substantial amount or, you know, looking like it looks now? What would she have been referring to, do you think?
Well, probably the outside renovation project from 2018.
Landscaping.
Yeah. So and that's that's not like just yesterday. So it's maybe if you don't follow the library along, it may feel like yesterday. But if there are a lot of people who think that, then it's really important to make sure that they know what's happening and that it's not just, you know, one year we do this, the next year we do that, you know, but what we have going now is not something that just occurred before.
That was my response that, you know, it's like to the to everyone's point. It's a building like anything else. You have to maintain it. And it's an older building with with parts and additions and roofs and and so forth. We kept it light, but just that she brought that up, I think, and feedback to share with everyone that people are questioning or wondering. And that's that's all. But I did, I did mention to her that it's like anything else. It's an older building and it needs maintenance. So.
The question makes sense. Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, and very few people are aware that we're dealing with a building that the core of which was was constructed in the 1950s. And well, those are, you know, those are things that occur. We have 11 different roofing services.
Right.
And they're not on the same calendar. So almost any three year period that you throw a dart at, you're going to have to do something. And that's, you know, that's just part of the the landscape of maintaining a public building that has been constructed and assembled in stages over a very long period of time, over 70 years with essentially the same core building. Obviously, we've kept it up to date. We've made changes. But the maintenance is partly triggered by the age of the original building. So you're absolutely right that it's, you know, it's not a new building. I mean, parts of it are newer than others, but, you know, those are things that just have to be maintained over time.
Okay. Moving on to the next project update. The website, I'll I'll just go there. Our our project planning is underway. We've engaged library market. Our project will be kicking off officially with our with our project manager in early May. And in the meantime, staff in our committee is already well ahead of their of the curve. We had a quick engagement meeting with our project manager last week. And they gave us some homework. We gave them some homework. And we're all in our respective corners doing our our projects and inventory and so on, getting prepared for that actual onboarding and kickoff meeting that we're going to have in early May when things will really get going in earnest. So we're excited for that opportunity here very shortly. So that's the website project. Not a lot to share at this point, but at the next meeting, definitely more. And the other big project that we have going on is our RFID project. So the radio frequency identification tagging project continues. And today was a major milestone for us. Last week, we wrapped up work on the second floor, having tagged basically the entire youth services collection. That is the largest collection in the library. So the entire second floor, save for the compact discs, has been completed, and the entire print collection on the first floor has been completed. So Patsy and her team moved down to the lower level and will commence the nonfiction collection, the adult nonfiction collection here today. So we're thrilled about that. We're moving along at a real fast clip. And the final phase of the project will be as we kind of wrap around into the 900s. So we're we're starting kind of geographically on the east side of the lower level, and we'll work our way basically towards the northwest of the building when we wrap up there in the 900s and with a nonfiction DVD collection. The last phase of the project will be going upstairs again to the first floor media room. And we have some, an interesting development in there. Knowing that we're going to be touching every single item in the media collection gave us an opportunity to evaluate how we package some of our our resources. And we've evaluated a new kind of case for our compact disc collection, or at least the majority of the of the compact disc collection. The single disc and double disc sets that are in jewel cases are eligible to be replaced in a a thin acrylic sleeve. We've seen a number of our partner agencies have been doing this for a while now. We see it through our interlibrary loans through CCS and so on. So we did some investigative research there to determine if it was the right fit for us here at Willmet. And we've determined that, in fact, it is. We can fit far more CDs in a smaller space. It's a better use of the space in that room, which is already kind of compacted. And it will give us an opportunity to grow a little bit and hopefully present that collection in a way that's a little bit more alluring and doesn't require as much maintenance. The jewel cases tend to break when they land in the book drop. It's been a pervasive issue for us for years. And this is going to be a way for us to better manage that collection going forward. So we're going to make an investment in some new cases for those. They'll look prettier because they won't all be worn. And it'll take a little bit longer to do it, but we're going to do it right, since we're going to be tagging them all anyway. So that's a project that will be coming on here very shortly. We had our gates installed today, too. That was a major milestone for us. So a week or so ago, we took down the old gates. Our electrician, who's going to be working on the the end phase of our Capitol project, helped decor a couple holes in the floor at the entrance for our brand new gates. And we got those all set up and installed and configured today. We previously had two aisles that were at the entrance, and they were narrow three foot aisles. We now have a single five and a half foot aisle that's easier to walk through at the front entrance. And they're I guess, as far as security infrastructure goes, they're more attractive. They're kind of a clear acrylic as opposed to those big bulky kind of lattice looking gray gates that we had for 20 plus years. So as exciting as as a security gate system can be, we're we're happy with what we've got here today. And yeah, so so that's the other piece of infrastructure. We also had completion of our our self checkout system as reported in my director's report on page eight. There, we actually have some statistics for that now as well, which is really exciting. And we didn't have that kind of data immediately available to us in the past. But now we've got hour by hour data for each of our self checkout units. They're all numbered as well, so we can keep track of which ones are performing better than others. That'll help us to analyze if the locations are appropriate for their current placement. So that's an exciting new resource. And as you can see from the statistics, they're all being used. And they're scattered throughout the building. We've got two on the second floor. The majority of them are on the first floor, and we've got one on the lower level close to where BDU is. So we're really excited for this new equipment, and our patrons are really taken to it. So that's kind of where we're at on the RFID project. Any questions about that?
I don't have a question about the RFID, but I know one thing that I am curious about is when you change the sleeves, will you change how you display the media so that it's easier to find what you're looking for? Because I know that was one of Stuart's constant thoughts, constant suggestions. So I was just curious.
The shelving system for the compact disc collection was very expensive, and we're not going to be replacing the shelving system for it because that collection's circulation has, in fact, gone down over the course of the last several years. That media, physical media is not circulating as strongly as it did years ago. However, we can reuse the existing shelving. And we do think that the solution is, in fact, a more attractive way to display the collection and actually makes it maybe a bit more accessible. So by example, since you're interested, I will show you one of these cases here. So what we have here is one of these sleeves. They're very thin. The packaging, we just removed the the plastic cases, but you can see that one of the spine labels from the side of this two disc set has a place on the top of this. So it's very easy to browse what the title of the thing is. You have the the benefit of the face out, but you also have all the name of of the item at the top of it. So when you're browsing through a list of them, you can see them all much more readily. It's a more attractive way of displaying the collection. And these acrylic sleeves will just will be more, they're they're prettier than than the kind of the jewel cases get yellow over time, and they get worn and are much less attractive. They break. The little donuts that hold the disc in place break off and the discs get scratched. This is just going to be an overall better better way to maintain those collections for the for the remainder of their life. But as I said before, this is really just for the single and double disc sets that are in jewel cases. We analyze the other pieces in the collection. We're talking a lot about CDs here. I love CDs. We can talk about music all day. But we're we're not going to be affecting the 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 way that we house the other portions of that collection. The box sets will remain in the same original packaging that they were. Digipacks and other multi-disc sets, box sets that kind of come bound in other media are going to, we're not going to change that up. There's too much labor involved in that.
Anthony, this is only the, as you say, the music, not the DVDs.
No.
That's a totally different. But aren't those still in? I haven't taken one out in a long time. Aren't those still in a jewel plastic case?
They're in as well. Years ago, we had them in a special type of security case. We currently do not have the security strips installed in those cases, but they are in a repackaged library specific case that helps them to not break. DVD media storage cases have changed a lot in the last few years. They've gone to a far more recyclable type format. That's not really appropriate for library circulation. So we do have them already repackaged as a matter of course. And we're going to continue on with the packaging that we have for our DVD collection. That seems to be working for us. We could certainly talk a lot about the presentation and labeling of that collection. But I think we should move on to another topic here tonight. But that is what we're doing with the with the CDs as part of the RFID project.
Just the I do have, I do have one additional question about the website. Will it be down for any period of time, or does it magically appear whole when people are going to be using it?
So we will create the brand new website as part of a, it will be created separately. And there will be a sort of, we'll call it a sandbox where we can kind of play, design it. There'll be a focus group or there'll be focus groups that will be able to work on it, comment on it. We'll have them both running concurrently at what at some point we'll advertise the new site so folks can take a look at it and provide feedback on it in advance of its launch. That will happen later this summer. In terms of downtime, there there will be a bit of downtime associated when the domain naming service, the DNS, has to change over. But they're really, it would be nominal. It would be a matter of minutes potentially, and we will schedule that at a time when there would least likely be traffic to the site. So, yep.
Good. Thank you.
Not quite like when the electricity is going to turn off at the library. All right. Anything else about the the project updates? Okay, all right. So then I think the next item on the agenda is the director's report. So I will keep riffing with with my talk. There's a number of things that I could highlight this month. Obviously, one of our primary events in April has been our One Book Everyone Reads program. The culmination of that programming was last week on April 14th, when we hosted Charles U for our our author presentation. And that event was attended by 315 screens. We're compiling all of the feedback that we received from that event. So our author programming has actually been really quite remarkable in this virtual environment this last year. And a number of our patrons have given us feedback that they hope that there's some way that we can continue to provide the convenience of having digital participation in a lot of our programming. So as we're looking forward, that'll certainly be one thing that we'll want to have on our radar as one of our service model options going forward is the conveniences that have been introduced as part of the pandemic response plan, including parking lot pickup as well as virtual access to programming. But so far, we've had really strong feedback about the the Ober programming. There was a whole range of series that we offered in in this, from Genealogy to Mahjong to a really outstanding presentation about anti-Asian hate and xenophobia in the age of COVID. There's some really outstanding conversations that we had around the book itself as part of our book discussions. All in all, we feel that that this year's selection was really popular with our community, and we've had some some strong feedback about it as well. Do any of you have any comments about your your individual experiences with our one book programming or any feedback about the event itself?
The beauty of the xenophobia, the the workshop, the lecture that you had there is that the audience, and they got them to participate. So that was good as opposed to being just somebody talking to you. They actually engaged. So I thought that was a good way to keep people involved and engaged.
Thank you.
I heard the author. And I thought he, I thought it was well done. It's not quite like being in It's not quite like being the auditorium or whatever, but it worked. It was good. Yeah. He's he was engaging. Thank you.
Was engaging and I thought personally that the best part was when he just talked and talked about himself and talked about what he'd gone through and puzzling through how to do the book and get it out and why he did it. So that that part was really excellent.
I think that's always interesting to myself, a non-reader, what writers, you think that it just sort of appears, but their angst and their trials and tribulations are, I think are, it brings it to life, you know, it brings it to a reality maybe. So yeah, I think that was good to hear him relate how what worked for him and what didn't going through his process.
Did you get any negative feedback, Anthony? Did the library?
The negative feedback that I've heard is a bit limited. I did hear some and I heard it from, actually from from one of my trustees. Lisa, do you want to, do you want to share your feedback?
Yeah, when I went to my water aerobics, I think one of the problems was is that we're used to hear, we would have liked to the author to have talked more and that the questions could have been a little deeper and a little bit more engaging what they were. Those were some of, I mean, but that's just myself. That was my thought because I I go to a book review a week at least, either through New York Public Library or else I go to Fan. And so I guess I'm looking at how they do it. And I just thought that it could have been a little bit more, I don't know, in terms of, that was just my thought.
And and that's a point well taken. As a matter of background regarding that, the the author originally, the plan was that we were going to have a 30 minute presentation from the author as we typically do for our Ober program. And that was changed up at the last minute at the publicist's request, who changed this to a Q and A format. And as a result, there was a hard pivot on the point of our staff and consultants to restructure the way that we had developed the program in an effort to try to meet with that. So I think it was, it was maybe not the way that we had planned it to be. And I think we learned a little bit about how we can establish a bit more structure for the programming, but sometimes we're not going to be able to influence that. And I think no matter how we would have dug in on this particular instance, I think that that it would have still just been, you know, well, this, I'm the author, I'm your guest, and this is what I want to do. So this is how it's going to be. So sometimes that happens. And I think, you know, I think we bounced as best as we could from that, but it it we agree it didn't, that didn't quite go exactly the way that we wanted it to.
Okay.
Also appropriate to note, when we created the North Suburban Library Foundation Author Series a number of years ago, and we had internationally recognized authors, Edward Albee and many others. You know, the the challenges of that sort of a program are always filled with unknowns because you're talking, you don't know ahead of time exactly what the author wants to do or is most comfortable doing. And you have to be flexible and adaptive to what they would like to do. And so sometimes it just doesn't go quite as you imagine that it would. And that's part of the, you know, the adventure that you're going into when you engage people who are well known. Actually, some of our authors are not as well known as what we had coming in for the for the North Suburban Library Systems programs because we were drawing from the entire North Shore. And it was a fundraising activity to support the foundation. But the bottom line is that you're always going to have some unexpected occurrences and unknowns that you just have to adapt to as they occur. And, you know, this is a, this is an effort which I think is is well appreciated in the community. But it takes a certain amount of flexibility to pull it off. So, you know, those things happen, no matter how well planned it is, late changes are part of what you're dealing with just by running such a program.
But Mary Ann, we appreciate the friends and their support. So thank you.
Absolutely. Yes.
I think I think a lot of the workshops were really good. I didn't have time to see all of them, but I enjoyed the variety.
Yes, thank you, Lisa. We're very grateful for the friends and their sponsorship of this, our signature program of the year. And I guess I think that's all I had about Ober. The next item I wanted to share with you all is there was a fair bit in my report actually about one of our ongoing community partnerships. So at the top of my report, I always talk about our strategic plan initiatives and one of those is sustaining our partnerships. I'm going to just do a mute here. And one of our our ongoing partnerships that I'm really thrilled about is our relationship with the League of Women Voters, WILMET. And we have had a longstanding book discussion club, book club with them. And I wrote about a little bit about our our meeting in my report this month. But we also had a couple other sessions that we partnered with the league this month. Obviously, our candidate forums, we were thrilled to be a part of that. That was one of our our main activities in March. But we also had our Citizens Climate Lobby event that we worked in collaboration with the league on. And that was also regarding one of the ballot initiatives on April 6. So we continue to be really impressed by our relationship with the league and are grateful that we are able to sustain that. In terms of other partnerships, today marked my first of 10 meetings that I'm going to be having with District 39. I am going to be participating as a community member in District 39's strategic planning process. So there were about 50 people on our call this afternoon. We had our orientation and onboarding meeting. And over the course of the next 10 weeks or so, we're going to be having a series of meetings where we're, I'm going to be learning an awful lot about the inner workings of District 39 and our schools, about their strategic planning initiative. They've got a consultant that they're working with on this project. And I think this is going to be really informative for me, both as the library director and learning about one of our community partners, about our community, about our learners, but also about the strategic planning process of one of our other affiliate organizations in the community and how I can bring some of those strategies to us here at WILMET Library. So I don't have much more to share about that here today, but I'm very much looking forward to the process. And I will be sharing more with you about that as that process moves forward. Speaking of D39, we've had a really fabulous response to our partnership with D39 in terms of getting our students in the schools registered for library cards. Our program continued this month and we registered 383 students for their first library cards in WILMET in gates, in grades K through eight. So we're really thrilled about that. And we'll continue to keep you updated on that. What else can I tell you here from my report?
I think Point of information, those 383, those were their first library cards?
They've registered for cards for the first time, yes. So a number of, a number of students may not have already had them. They could be new to our community. They could have just moved to town. They maybe were using their parents' cards previously or whatnot, but since given that option at school registration, which is the point where they would have this option, it would kind of take them off on a sidetrack. Do you have a WILMET library card is one of the questions. And if they say yes, it moves them on. If they say no, it can take them off to the side where they can enter their registration information and get pre-registered for a card. And then that is a cue to us to to then go ahead and create those records and then we mail the cards to the students.
It's great. Thank you.
Anthony, I do, I do have one question. What was the main goal that was to be satisfied by by the meeting? I mean, did they come to the library? Did you suggest that you meet with them and whatever? I mean, I I don't understand what the goal was of the meeting.
You mean the strategic planning meeting?
With the, no, the, yes, with the District 39. Is that something that usually happens? It's not, is it?
I'm not sure what historically D39 has done with engaging community partners. But as part of this process this year and and I think D39 is doing a one-year strategic plan. So their their plan this time around is to engage, they had an all call to a number of community organizations. And I responded to that and expressed interest and they selected me to be on the committee. The committee is also comprised of other members. I, one of the breakout rooms I was in today, I had a representative from the Park District. There were some families that were participating, parents as well as students, teachers and other faculty at at the school district. So it's, they're trying to involve a number of stakeholders, community wide in their process. Obviously, the end goal is is a new strategic plan.
Involving more of the community, is that part of it, do you think?
Involving stakeholders is a key element of it, yes.
Okay, good.
Jewel districts have no legislated requirement to conduct such planning. Libraries do. As a part of the Illinois State Library's management of the per capita grant program eligibility is connected to conducting a strategic plan every few years. That applies to all public libraries. And that's no, there is no such requirement for school districts. So this is not an event that occurs as frequently for public school districts because it's not mandated. For public libraries, it is mandated. So that is a difference. It represents an interest of the District 39 Board on their own initiative to conduct such an effort and to be as inclusive as as they can be. But they're not mandated to do so as as libraries are.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. I guess, you know, a couple, a couple of final points I can add from my director's report and then I can open it up to you all. We did have a policy committee meeting here recently. I just wanted to touch on that. But just the pieces that that did come back related to our meeting room policy. The attorney thought overall that our policies look great and endorse them. He did have a recommendation that we go back and reevaluate our meeting room policy, having having recently done that for a couple other peer libraries, he had a few recommendations for us in terms of structure and content for those policies. And he said, since you're doing a comprehensive review, there's a few things I might recommend that you add. And I thought, you know, well, maybe this is something I could throw in here at the last minute if it were nominal without needing to call another committee meeting over it. However, his, the draft policies that he shared with me were were really comprehensive and actually quite alluring in their content. So I felt instead of trying to rush this thing and bring it before the committee or the the whole board tonight for approval, I wanted to take it back before the staff to evaluate a few more of the details before I incorporated some of those changes, which I do think we're going to move forward with. So what I think as a matter of procedure, when the staff has had a chance to go through this, when I've had a chance to incorporate those changes and reflect with our stakeholders who have, can reflect upon the impacts, I will bring it before the policy committee again for another review. You'll have a chance to discuss it there in committee again before we take it to the board of the whole to discuss. The other bits of the of the policy that I hope to have ready for the next committee meeting will include our code of conduct, which we didn't look at at the last committee meeting, as well as the introduction of the policies associated with policy four, which is our next chapter, and that relates to library cards and accounts. And I've been working with circulation manager Kim Hagland on that over the course of the last couple of weeks. So that's going to be a really refreshed policy and I'm looking forward to sharing a bit more information about that with you here shortly. Then on to some other administrative details here in human resources. We're working on trying to fill a few vacancies. Our technical services manager position did not net a finalist for us. We've been working on trying to fill this position now for a few months and our recruitment strategies have unfortunately not been able to land us with the perfect fit for the position. So I'm currently working with a team to try to evaluate what our best option is for trying to fulfill that role going forward. We have some ideas, so I'll hopefully have more information to share with you at our next meeting about that. We also did just post for another vacancy in our digital services department. One of our key training roles is our software training associate and so that has been posted and we're going to advertise that a little bit more widely here this week. The last piece I'll share is that we have a special project that we we typically work on on a regular basis every couple of years. And that is our salary structure survey. We're going to be working with HR Source, our salary structure consultant will be going through and analyzing every one of our positions and doing a market analysis and comparison to ensure that our rates are competitive with our peers. And also with a portion of the nonprofit and for-profit sectors as a few of our jobs do overlap into other industries and are not just library specific, whether that is IT or graphic arts or safety and security, that sort of thing. So there's, there's a range of of roles that the HR source consultant is going to look at with us so that we can plan accordingly for future evaluation of our salary structure. And as you know, one of our long range plans is to ensure that we are able to effectively satisfy our requirement to get to minimum wage at $15 by 2025. And we are currently on pace for that.
Anthony, what's the timing? Is when you expect that evaluation? Salary evaluation to be complete?
The salary evaluation will be taking place over the course of the summer. It will probably be complete by this fall.
Okay, so it won't impact this year's budget coming up?
We will be building in our regular recommendations for updates to the salary schedule and we can talk a bit more about that as we get into our budget discussions. But the salary schedule does have a, an incremental plan to update to it as well as our compensation plan as well. And the results of this of this consulting project sets forth what the next steps are following the adoption of that new structure. So it has maintenance built into it and we're following the current maintenance plan from the previous structure. I think that completes the the broad summary of my report. Are there any individual questions that you have about the content of the report or anything else library related? If not, then we can turn over to some more broader library land related topics. Fina, I'm sorry, Jan.
Dan.
Do you have anything that you want to share with us? Rails or ILA?
Sure, just a couple of things. You can still register to attend the Reaching Forward Illinois Conference. And what they're doing this year is combining the Reaching Forward and the Reaching Forward South. And it's a $50 fee for both and you can find what what they're going to be doing on the ILA website. One particular thing, especially since we had the this one book, Everyone Reads, that I ran across. There was a survey done and I can't tell you where or when because they didn't say that. But they looked to see what books were banned or challenged in 2020 at different libraries. And it turned out that the answer to that surprised me, maybe not all of us, but the answer to that is that books with strong anti-racist messages aimed at kids and teens. Now, we're talking about books that were challenged. Just something to throw out there to think about. Especially since we, Anthony put in that we were supporting the Asian groups in WILMET and for anybody who came. So it's, it shocked me a little bit since there's been so much publicity about it, but it's something to think about. That's it.
Anthony, what's the deadline to register if any of the trustees want to attend in terms of contact and Marty? Do, should be, they contact you? For the ILA?
Reach out to me. Let me, let me know if you're interested and let me know by end of week.
Okay. So that's for any trustees. Thank you. That's it. Do you have anything else to add regarding Rails, Anthony?
I I don't.
Talked about it earlier.
Kind of, yeah.
Kind of, in terms of the latest policy.
The only other item that I would share with you is that trustees who are on the board in 2020 The only other item that I would share with you is that trustees who are on the board in 2020 do have the requirement from Cook County to file their statement of economic interest. You should email to do so. Please do go in and take care of that before May 1st. I'm going to be logging in here at the end of this week to confirm that we've got everyone, everyone's records recorded for that. If you have any questions whatsoever about how to do so, please reach out to me, and I can connect you with your resources at the county to complete that task.
Let me just say something too. And then this will be the last thing for three of our trustees, but we hope that they will come just for the first part of the May meeting so that we can say goodbye, and we'd like to do a formal thank you at that time. And so trustee Rogers, trustee Wolf, and trustee Johnson, thank you so, we'll be saying more then. So I hope to see you then. Okay. Thanks.
As a footnote, you need a quorum to open the meeting in May.
I know.
And if these trustees who are going off the board in the middle of that, don't show up, you may have the challenge to achieve that. So.
What do we need to do to bribe you to get there?
I don't know that it will take a bribe in my case, but the bottom line is the current board starts the meeting and then adjourns that meeting after approval of the minutes and whatever else is necessary. And the new board is sworn in and elects officers and proceeds. So for those of you who are new trustees, you should be present for the entire meeting. The old, the retiring trustees and the continuing trustees open the meeting.
Thank you, Ron. Okay. Is there any new business? Any old business? Do any of the observers have any comments that they would like to make? Then is there, I move that we adjourn the meeting at 7:16. Is there a second?
I will second.
Trustee, seconds of the motion. It's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, trustee Barshes?
Trustee Barshes, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
He left about 30 minutes ago.
Okay. Trustee, trustee Riddle?
Yes. And I also wanted to say that I really appreciate everyone reaching out to me last month and for your generous and thoughtful words. It brought me a lot of comfort to know that this is a board that I, you know, I may not know you all for so long, but you really made me feel so, so comforted and supported when my father passed away. And I really appreciate your words, those who reached out to me and the generous, generous donation to St. Francis on my dad's behalf. So I wanted to say that before, before we adjourn. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Trustee Rogers? Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDowell?
Yes. Thank you, and have a good night.
You, Madam President, for a very nice meeting, and you as well, Anthony.
Night, everyone. Thank you.
Night.